And welcome to our town council meeting for June. Before we move into our meeting agenda, our first item is public comment. And the town's public comment period should be reserved for those citizens that have signed up to address the town council, or a board or committee at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting pursuant to the town's public comment policy outlined above. And tonight, we have one person that would like to speak, and Claudia Beldon. And if you'll come forward, state your name, address, and if you live in the town limits, and you'll have three minutes.
Sure. Hi, I'm Claudia Beldon, and live at 115 Winchester Lane in Smyrna, in the town limits. And I wanted to thank the mayor and the city manager, town manager, and the council for supporting the RAD program. I've taken it three times, and you know, I think I may have been in the first class. That's been a long time ago. It's something that I can highly recommend for all women and girls. I think it's 12 and over, 12. And we appreciate the police department, and Captain Gibson is an excellent facilitator. I learned so much. I learned a lot how vulnerable, you know, we really are, and how important it is to be situationally aware. The first class, that's all it is, is situational awareness, and it was really eye-opening. There's a lot of things we, women and girls, can do to protect ourselves and to not find ourselves in a vulnerable situation. And then the other classes are hands-on, and, you know, we do the punching and the kicking and the jabbing and everything.
That's a really big smile.
And poor Potsie about beating him to death the first time I did it. We really appreciate it. It's a very positive experience. I would encourage everyone, all the females, to take it, and you guys, your wives, your daughters, your mothers. You know, I had to adapt from the other two times I've taken it because I'm older. You know, the joints just aren't working like they used to, but being older doesn't prevent me from being vulnerable. So it's important to whatever level you're at, to be aware. And thank you again for supporting this very valuable program. I hope that the town continues to, and it's definitely worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia, thanks for coming in and sharing. I will say that consistently, that is a class that I get more emails, texts, and messages about that, once people have taken it, they are so glad that they've been able to take it, and they want to spread the message as well about how good it is and that others should take it as well. So, thank you. Okay, I will call our meeting to order tonight. Chaplain Tim York with the Smyrna Police Department will do our prayer, and our pledge will be done by Assistant Town Manager and Director of Finance Rex Gaither. If you'll all stand with us.
Let's pray. Our Father, we're grateful for this gathering this evening, and we're reminded that you have given us government. Thank you for those who serve in this capacity. We pray that you will bless their lives and their families. Father, we pray for all those who serve this city as employees, that you will bless them and their families and protect them from harm. Thank you for what you're doing in the town of Smyrna. And Lord, we pray that you will continue to move in our midst and bless us. Thank you for a free country to live in, and the opportunity to express ourselves. In your name we pray. Amen.
Vice Mayor I Blais. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain, and Rex. Ms. Amber, if you'll do roll call.
Yes, ma'am. I can get to my sheet here. Councilman Dempsey?
Here.
Councilwoman Peoples?
Here.
Councilman Cole? Councilman Short?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Reed?
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is approval or correction of the minutes of the May 13th, 2025 special call meeting and regular meeting of the town council, and the May 29th, 2025 special call meeting and workshop meeting of the town council. Jeff, are these in order?
In order, Mr. Form, unless you have any changes you'd like to make, council.
Okay. Council, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion and a second discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Any correspondence or communications tonight, Amber or Dave?
Amen.
Okay.
We'll move on to awards and recognitions tonight. Our first proclamation is for a Smyrna citizen, Teresa Bass. Ms. Amber, if you'll take this for us?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas it is with sincere gratitude and admiration that the town of Smyrna and the Smyrna Police Department recognize a devoted citizen of the town of Smyrna, Ms. Teresa Bass. And whereas, for the past 10 years, Ms. Bass has consistently and thoughtfully maintained the flowers on the graves of Smyrna's beloved K-9 officers. And whereas, this remarkable act of kindness and respect has been carried out without any prompting or expectation of recognition. And whereas, Ms. Teresa Bass's dedication to honoring the memory of these brave animals is a testament to her character and deep appreciation for their service to our Smyrna community. And whereas, Ms. Bass's selfless efforts have not gone unnoticed, the town of Smyrna and the Smyrna Police Department are profoundly moved by her unwavering commitment and the quiet dignity with which she performs this important task. And whereas, Ms. Teresa Bass's actions exemplify the best of our community spirit, reminding all of us of the importance of remembering and honoring those who have served us, both human and animal. And whereas, it is fitting and proper that the town of Smyrna recognize and commend Ms. Teresa Bass through this public acknowledgement for her significant contributions to our Smyrna Police Department and community. Now therefore, I, Mary Esther Reed, Mayor of the town of Smyrna, on behalf of the council and the Smyrna Police Department, do hereby proclaim our sincere gratitude to Ms. Teresa Bass for her extraordinary contributions to our town, and in recognition of her kindness that makes a significant and lasting impact on our Smyrna community.
Thanks, Amber. If you guys would like to come forward, Ms. Bass, if you'll come forward as well, and I'm going to see if there's anything you'd like to add.
Just like to say a special thank you to Ms. Bass. I had the honor of being the first handler for aerial, and over the years, as our K-9s passed, they were buried up close to the fire hall. We would put flowers on the grave, and I noticed one day, when I went by to put new flowers on, they were already there. I contacted the other officers. No one seemed to know where they came from. None of us knew about it. And three years went by, and I got on good old Facebook one day, under Hip Smyrna, and I said, whoever's putting the flowers on, I want to thank you personally. It means a lot to me. And Ms. Bass answered me and said, it's me. And for the past 10 years, going unnoticed and unthanked by the community, she's done this. Every four to six months, there were new flowers put on there. And no one asked her to do this. She did this out of her heart and love for the animals. And all three of us are former K-9 officers, and we greatly appreciate everything you've done.
I think this is truly what the town of Smyrna is about. People stepping up, not knowing, you didn't do it because you wanted recognition. You did it out of the love of your heart, and we can't tell you how much we appreciate that. Rick, you got a little something there?
Not a dog. Bitch's left. She asked for a dog.
Oh, she asked for a dog? Oh, my word! Uh-oh, you may be inundated with dogs now. We've got the chihuahua. So, Ms. Heather, will you get us a picture?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, our next certificate is for Vince, oh, our next certificate is for Vincent Hillsham?
Hillshane.
Hillshane, Hillshane, okay. And he is a 2025 honors graduate at Smyrna High School, and will be attending the University of Tennessee at Martin this fall, studying engineering. As part of his Eagle Scout project, he chose to restore a long-forgotten overgrown cemetery, which is right over by Rocky Fork Middle?
Yeah.
Between the middle and the elementary school. And so, his dad had done a little post on social media and was needing some help getting brush taken away, and so that's how we kind of got involved as a town. But if you want to come forward, we just want to tell you how much we appreciate what you've done, and congratulations on your Eagle Scout.
So can we stand up behind you?
Sure.
So, congratulations. So Amber, our last proclamation?
Yes, ma'am.
Is for somebody pretty special here.
Yes. All right. We, the town of Smyrna mayor and council, take great pride and pleasure in joining the many family members, coworkers, friends, and citizens of the Smyrna community in congratulating Rex Gaither, Finance Director and Assistant Town Manager, upon his richly deserved retirement after more than 34 years with the town of Smyrna. Whereas Rex Gaither began his career with the town of Smyrna in 1991, when he was hired as Purchasing Director. Rex eventually became the Finance and Purchasing Manager in 1998, upon consolidating the Purchasing and Finance Departments. And whereas, in March 2011, Rex was promoted to Finance Director of the town of Smyrna, and in December 2019, was named as Finance Director and Assistant Town Manager. And whereas, under Rex's leadership, the town of Smyrna secured a AAA credit rating, demonstrating the highest level of creditworthiness, indicating a very low risk of default, and a strong ability to meet its financial obligations, benefiting taxpayers and enabling the town to invest in critical projects. And whereas, through Rex's tenure, he has ensured the town's legacy pension plan will be fully funded and significantly reduce general debt. His financial strategies have resulted in tangible improvement of the quality of life for Smyrna citizens without requiring debt issuance or tax increases, and it strengthened the town's financial position, leaving Smyrna with stronger reserves. And whereas, Rex Gaither's financial acuity, coupled with several years of strong sales tax revenue, has put the town of Smyrna in a position to pay cash for several large capital projects, build and equip a new fire station, extend infrastructure on our west side, and build the new Cedarstone Park, projects totaling almost $40 million. And whereas, Rex Gaither is the ultimate civil servant. His dedication to the town of Smyrna is a testament to his character and deep appreciation for service to our Smyrna community. Rex's legacy will impact Smyrna citizens for generations to come. Rex's primary goal to safeguard the citizens' investment in their community has not gone unnoticed. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mary Esther Reed, on behalf of the council, do hereby commend the more than 34 years of selfless service dedicated to the town of Smyrna, and extend sincere best wishes to Rex Gaither.
Rex, if you'll come forward. So this is bittersweet for us tonight. There is no better person that could be in the position that Rex is in. He has helped Smyrna get to where it is today. There's no way we would have a AAA bond rating without Rex. And I know I rode you pretty hard on that AAA bond rating. It was, it was. But you have left a foundation that is going to leave us in great shape, and Sierra is going to be able to continue to build on that. But we appreciate not only you, but your family, because I know there's been hours away from your family to help serve the town of Smyrna. So, anything you'd like to say?
Well, I love my job. I think it's a unique job when you get to serve 60,000 people, and you have an opportunity to improve their quality of life. Everybody says, you know, you need to retire, and you need to retire. Well, it's been kind of a, you know, yeah, I need to, but I really love my job. I love the people that I'm around. I've had tremendous support from the mayor and the council, and of all the people that I've worked with through the years, we have an outstanding workforce here that's very passionate about taking care of our citizens.
Agreed. Okay, well, we appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll now move on to our consent agenda, and these are items that are determined by our town manager to be routine matters, not necessarily needing individual discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be voted on individually if a council member wants to pull that off and vote on it individually. I do like to read each one of these items so that the citizens know what we're voting on. There's quite a few tonight, so if you will bear with us. Item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a lease with Conica Minolta for replacement of the copier at the county, at the court clerk's office. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a rental agreement with the Minnesota Science Museum for the Amazing Castles exhibit. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the material bid tabs for the gas, water, and sewer departments for fiscal year 2026. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Thomas &amp; Hutton for the design permitting easements and construction admin for the Lowry Street Bridge area sewer line upgrade. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Thomas &amp; Hutton for the design bidding and construction admin for gas line relocation within Waldron Road Widening Project in Laverne. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Verizon for the Nissan tank antenna. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual agreement with MR Systems LLC for preventative maintenance and repair services for the water treatment plant for 2526. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the 2526 annual bid contract for chemicals for the water and wastewater treatment plant. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the 2526 chemical contract extension for the water treatment plant. Item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with DRT Bio-Solids for lagoon sludge removal for the water treatment plant. Item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with IMNE relative to the Electrical Mechanical Maintenance Contract for the water plant, wastewater plant, and distribution collection systems for 2526. Item L is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension with the annual concrete contract with Rollins Excavating Company LLC. Item M is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement for roadway patching with Sessions Paving. Item N is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Roadway Management Technologies to perform continuous data collections on our roadway systems to develop a roadway lifecycle management plan. Item O is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with OR: Associates to acquire right-of-way along Old Nashville Highway for a sidewalk. Item P is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual contract with Pope Striping for roadway striping. Item Q is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension with Sweeping Corporation of America LLC for street sweeping. Item R is approval of the terms of a revised open-door policy for inclusion in the town employee handbook. And item S is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a one-year provisional services agreement with, professional services agreement with Rex Gaither for financial consulting services. Is there an item that anyone would like to pull off and discuss individually?
Yes, Mayor, I've got four items.
Okay.
G, L, M, and R.
Okay, I also had R as well. Anything else?
That's it.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda other than G, L, M, and R?
I'll make a motion to approve all the consent agenda, with the exception of items G, L, M, and R.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent passes. We'll now go back to G, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual agreement with MR Systems LLC for preventative maintenance and repair services for the water treatment plant for 2526. Jerome, what?
There was, Mayor thinks, there was an item in there, Addendum A, which wasn't included this time, but on page three of five, they have a price escalator to be adjusted on January 1st. So my question was, since this is an annual contract, will that escalator come into play January 1st, six months after we approve the annual contract?
They could.
Okay.
They have not done that so far in the contracts we've had with them, but that is a possibility.
And there's a limit of 5%.
Correct.
Isn't there? Yeah.
However, under our standard addendum, the contract is voidable if they cannot agree that they can keep the same price.
To a price.
So we could retreat from it without being agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
Good on that one. Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve item G?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item G passes. Item L is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension of the annual con, annual concrete contract for Rollins Excavating Company LLC. Jerome?
Easy for you to say, Mayor.
I know.
In that contract and the extension agreement, in the wording, it indicates an additional two years, but it lists July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, has one year.
So if you'll look on there, it's a misplaced, spelled out, too. So in three other places there in the recitals, it's supposed to be two one-year extensions, and so some, they're just a misplaced TW over there. But it's pretty clear that it's just through the end of June 2026.
So the dates dictate the contract.
Correct.
Okay.
And earlier in the recitals, it says one year as well. It's just, I don't, we'll make sure that gets fixed there.
That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Then do I have a motion to approve item L?
I'll make the motion.
Perfect. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item L passes. Item M is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement for roadway patching with Sessions Paving.
Yes, Mayor, same comment as previous, two years versus the dates. But then also, can we get the bid items for last year's contract? I don't think they were included, the actual line items and the cost from last year's contract that we're now extending.
And moving forward, we're going to make sure that those, from workshop on, so we'll make sure that if, I could certainly provide that to you after the fact, if it's a matter of not being comfortable, obviously approving the contract, seeing what the original line items were, you know, we could, we could deal with that.
I'm going abstain. Everybody else has seen it, you know, last year, and so I'm just going to abstain from that vote.
Okay. Any other questions on item M? If not, do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With one abstention.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move to item R, which is approval of the terms of a revised open-door policy for inclusion in the town employee handbook. Jerome, I'll let you start.
Yeah, I'll start off, and I know you have a few comments. I just want to commend, you know, HR, the council, and everyone. I think this revised open-door policy has some language in it now to hold, you know, the council, the town manager, the town attorney, department heads, everyone accountable. If there's a grievance, there's no retaliation. There's a non-retaliation clause in there as well, and I just, I think this is a step in the right direction from what we've experienced in the past. That's it.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Jeff, you and I, I called you over the weekend, and we had some discussion about this. It's laid out because this is for employees, for the process in which they would come if they had an issue with somebody. But let's talk a little bit, which we talked about, that it doesn't need to be in this policy, but if, if someone from, if an employee comes to one of us with a problem or an issue, what then is, because since we can only do something when we're in session with all of us together, talk a little bit about what we talked about this weekend and what our role needs to be next.
Sure. So it would be, you know, obviously it doesn't need to stay with that, that one person, but the two people that you hold accountable is the town manager and I. So unless we're a dynamic duo doing something bad, which you then go to outside counsel for that, but if the complaint was against me, then you would have Mr. Santucci to go to, and vice versa, and you would hold us accountable for making sure that those next steps are in place, or that happen. Go ahead.
But as you said, if it's something against both of you together, then we would then proceed to outside counsel.
And we have retained outside counsel for that.
Okay.
And do we have a specific outside counsel team or firm that we would go to? Because you said, and we have multiple outside counsel.
We have three.
So do you have a specific one that we would go to for any type of matter related to this?
We have three, and I would assume that you would probably be in consult with Jeff Craig, the HR director, on something like that as well. And so you could choose, whatever the situation is, you may want Howland Fisher, or you may want Littler, but that could be something that maybe Jeff can also tell you. It's ultimately up to you, but give you direction on which ones that you would use. The other firm we use is only for land issues.
So it would be two.
Depending on the map, sorry.
Yes, yeah. Depending on the matter and the area of expertise. Generally, Littler does a lot of more employee, directly employee stuff for us, but obviously Howland Fisher's done a lot of work for us over the years as well.
So it's going to be one of those two, more than likely?
Yes.
Not, because you said that we have three outside counsel, but I just want to make clear, it's probably going to be one of the two that you just said.
Correct, correct.
Because the other just deals with land issues, correct?
Correct. We utilize them only for land issues.
Okay.
So council, do y'all have questions about this?
Yeah, I've got a couple more comments, and I think this is to follow up what you said, Mayor, is just say there's a substantial grievance, okay, against either the town manager, town attorney, council member. How will the other council members be informed and stay abreast of that, rather than a public meeting? You know, does the, do y'all come to us individually? You know, because if, if there's a grievance and someone goes to one person, then that person's perspective may be different than the counsel's. person's perspective may be different than the council as a whole. So, so that's one item. The, the second item was, and I think I discussed this with you, Jeff, before, if there is a substantial grievance, or grievance, every grievance is substantial, but how do we select, I know we have attorneys under contract, my, my thing is, I want to make sure we select attorney, an attorney that's far enough removed from leadership that they give an unbiased opinion of what's going on. And Mark gets back to specialties too, as far as attorneys, I know, but I just want that unbiased separation.
So I will say first address about how you, how you discover, how you find out, those types of things. Obviously, that's why I use the word accountable, so it, it's going to be either town manager or myself, and if you're not finding that out, then, you know, you're going to hold one of us accountable, whichever one's going to be responsible for that, depending, if it's our situation, it could be another council member, then we're both accountable. And, and so, other than that, your, your other question about...
Well, let me, can that be discussed in executive session? Is that the best place since it?
The only thing we could advise in executive session is...
What's going on with that again?
Right, yeah, what your liabilities are, what we're doing, nothing, nothing towards that. And then the second question...
Pull, pull, move on from that, Jeff.
Oh, sorry, I keep trying to move on.
Yeah, so one, one, one more comment, and I think this is probably where Jerome's going with this, is there's nothing really in here about, it's saying they can report it to, let's say it's about the town attorney, they can report it to Dave or a council member or both, whatever. I would like to take it a step further and maybe even have the language in here somewhere that if this form is used related to either one of your positions, the entire council needs to be made aware of it, not just one member, even if they only go to one member. If they file an open-door policy complaint, one of these used this form, then I think, no matter how minor it seems by the one person or the other employee, we should all be aware of it and be made aware of it. And I'm not saying that wouldn't happen, but that's not specifically called out. I wouldn't want a complaint to go to me and me, about you, and me and Dave talk about it, and we feel like it's really not a complaint, and we handle it, and the rest of the council never hears about it. I don't want that to happen, because ultimately, the rest of the council performs your reviews and determines, you know, how you're rated annually. I think any complaint needs to be shared equally.
I agree with that.
Even if it just goes to one person, once it gets to you guys, whether it's individually, email, however you choose to do it, it needs to be, and maybe that, once it goes to one person, there's some language that says then it's somehow shared with everyone.
Yes, that was one of the things I had a concern about, because I think we all need to be made aware.
Yeah, I think that's where Jerome was going, I want to speak for you, but I kind of figured that's where you're going.
Yeah, I might not have been too clear, but yes.
Well, I think, we're talking about two different things here. One is the council side, which you're not subject to the handbook, this is a handbook policy. To me, and we, obviously we'll do whatever y'all want to do, whatever you feel good with, but I think the reason that it's written that way, this is for employees, this is how it goes up, and not so much, this is how council deals with it, it's more of, this is the process of how, how it goes up, so that they can, obviously you wouldn't want to require the employee to go speak to all seven council members.
Exactly.
And so I think that's the only reason you're seeing that, is because it, it goes up that direction. I think at any time, of course, the, the council can make a policy of anything that you're speaking of, but that's the reason that that is not discussed in that part of it, it's just because this is what's going into the, the employee handbook.
I think it's necessary for the employees to know that that will be part of the process. So I'm still in agreement with having some type of language.
I mean, literally, a word that just says, any, any formal complaint lodged against the town manager or a council member or the attorney will be communicated to the entire council. So that way they know, if I go to one council member, it's not just going to stay with one council member.
Right.
It's going to be shared, as well as we all have a comfort level that we're going to hear about any incident, no matter how minor it may seem.
So why don't we, why don't we defer this till next month, so we can bring you the exact language, so that you're fine with the language that we use?
And honestly, if I'd have thought about that before this meeting, I would have brought it to you, but until Jerome kind of mentioned it, I hadn't really thought about it that way.
Well, to your point, we do both their reviews.
Yeah.
And so I think because of that, communication parity has to be recognized as well, everybody should be hearing the same information from the council level.
And I need to go back to look, was it that way about, was it only Dave's and Jeff's that came to us?
It says town manager, town attorney, town judge, court clerk, or council member. So it's all five of those groups.
Okay. And are we in agreement that all five?
And actually, it says it goes to either attorney or council, I think we need to be made aware of any of those, no matter whether it goes to attorney.
So rather than or is and?
Right.
Does that then take care of it? From or to and?
Well, I don't want to make confused, because I think that's the direction for the employee.
Yeah, that's their reporting.
I don't want to confuse them, I think they got to go talk to every council member.
Right.
Which is not the intent.
Yeah.
Especially if it's sensitive, they may not be comfortable talking to more than one person anyway.
So we just need to add something here that won't be under that column, that just explains what, what you've conveyed to me this evening, I'll get Jeff Craig and we'll add that in.
Well, and I think it's important, whether any of us are up here, for those that come after us that are sitting up here too.
Sure.
So, okay, so we will then pull item R, do we need to vote to defer it, are we good just pulling it?
Let's, let's vote to defer.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Wait, Jerome, still didn't answer the question.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, we don't get to that, stop, make it stop. Okay, so, asking about being non-biased attorneys, as far as I am aware, I don't know of a direct relationship that legal counsel has with anybody on this council, unless, you may have seen them a couple times, that doesn't mean that doesn't happen, but I don't, I'm not aware of it.
But there is a direct relationship with you.
With me, of course, yeah, of course.
If it's something related to you, so how would we handle that? If, if it wouldn't be an issue for any other of these scenarios, it would be an issue with you.
Correct, well, one, probably Howland Fisher wouldn't take it, because we've worked so long together, number one, they probably would, if it was against me. And so Littler, who has plenty of attorneys that I do not know, Eric Stevens I've worked with in a professional manner, but he's also held by the rules of professional responsibility as well, and so I don't think that he would want to get himself in a trouble with the bar over me anyway, so, but I don't have any concerns on that. But if you did, you could always ask for, they have a house full of attorneys that, one that we've not worked with before, and I know that they would, they're going to be just as eager, Steve, you work with attorneys there, that they're going to be just as eager to avoid any problems as anybody else would be, so.
Well, and the, the reason I brought that up is, I know how relationships work, you know, in business. If you work with certain people long enough, you know, you go to lunch, you talk, and I'm not saying anyone does that, but I'm just trying to assure that there's a professional separation, where the attorney that's looking into it is kind of in a vacuum, looking at it, then regurgitates or sends out his report, rather than getting all this noise from leadership.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, let me, if I can, just put this, if, if there was a, a firm, and I think right now we're focusing on hypotheticals, because hopefully neither myself nor Jeff have any complaints against us at this point, right?
Me too.
But I would probably come to y'all and say, look, if y'all are comfortable, I could, I could ask some of my colleagues around about outside labor councils that they may recommend, and then I would just ask that particular firm if they have any relationships with Town of Smyrna, and make sure there's a level of comfort with the council in terms of who was chosen hypothetically.
I think there's also one thing, and Jerome, you're right, especially in the corporate environment where there's relationships that you build, but I know Raquel knows this, attorneys and Jeff, attorneys are held by a completely different standard with the Board of Professional Responsibilities, if they do something that even, just even remotely crosses that line, their license, their livelihood could be in jeopardy. And so I, to me, I, I agree, but I think if we went to Littler and said, we need an attorney that has no working relationship with Jeff or has never worked on Jeff, you know, I think they would be okay, but I see your point.
I'm not going to comment on that.
Yeah.
And to explain, the only reason that we do that, the only reason we have through, and we have, that I comment that you can go to one of these here, is because you can go to anybody that you want to, but we'd have to wait 30 days, because you're going to have to get it on a council agenda to discuss what the fees are, those types of stuff, a workshop, and then go to the, and usually when these things happen, it's like, hey, we need to get it going on it, so you're not constrained to just those, but if you want to start it immediately. So if there was somebody else that you wanted to use, the council wanted to use, by all means, you, you have the ability, it's just a timeline.
Okay, other questions or comments on R? Then do I have a motion to defer?
I'll make the motion to defer item R until next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is deferred, and you'll bring it back to workshop first.
Yep, I will.
Okay, we'll now move on to old business. Tonight, we have five public hearings. Our first public hearing is consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Rex?
Mayor and council, the ordinance and budget for fiscal year 2526 are submitted for your consideration. I have included a spreadsheet detailing changes for your convenience, and these are from the changes from the first read to the second read. We have a revision that come to my attention today, that is a fee schedule change, and it's for the probation. Probation is requesting that we add oral alcohol instant screens to the probation fee schedule. The cost for each application is requested at $20, since ending our contract with OSM, probation and the courts no longer have the means to test a suspected intoxicated individual of current alcohol use. It is requested to add this item to the fee schedule, so probation can order the correct alcohol screens to fulfill this missing requirement. This is not anticipated to be used very much, so there'll be no changes to the revenues or expenditures.
Okay, we all got that email today, and then it's also on the table in front of you. Jerome, you had a question?
The only question I had, I didn't know if we skipped an agenda item S.
No, that was under the, that was under the consent agenda.
Okay.
That was part of the consent.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yep.
Okay, so you good?
No question, no questions.
Okay. Questions on the new item that we are adding, or anything for Rex before we move to the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for fiscal year 2526.
The tax rate ordinance establishes the property tax rate for fiscal year 2526. Our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same from the prior year at 52.57 cents on each $100 of assessed taxable property. We're requesting approval of this ordinance.
Questions on the tax rate staying the same this year? Okay, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against our tax Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, go to council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tax rate passes. Just want to say thank you to all of our department heads and Dave and staff, to look at a $63 million budget and know that we're able to keep a tax rate of 52 cents is pretty impressive, and to be able to pay in cash for as much as that we're able to do, so job well done, you guys, we appreciate you.
Rex, congratulations on 12 years of work.
Yeah.
Thank you. We've been very blessed.
We have.
What a way to go out, Rex.
On top.
On top, that's right. Okay, our next item C is consideration of an ordinance to approve year-end budget amendments for fiscal year 2025.
These are the proposed year-end budget amendments for fiscal year 25. These include the year-end transfer of excess surplus funds to the capital project fund, town manager recruitment, staff development and training, service awards and recognition, unforeseen repair and maintenance and employee expenses, several capital projects, primarily Cedarstone Tennis and Pickleball Project, equipment for a fire truck, computer upgrade and building improvements, and we are asking that you recommend, approve of these budget amendments.
Questions for Rex on any of the budget amendments for this year? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against these budget amendments. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing, go to council for a motion.
Do we approve?
Of a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is a public hearing, which is a consideration of a resolution for plan of services relative to the annexation R1 zoning of property on tax map 51, parcel 8.11. Hey, Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and council, this is the plan of services for the annexation, which is your next item on your agenda. This just puts in writing the services that the town would be providing upon the effective date of annexation, in this case, that is all services except for water, which would be provided by a consolidated utility district.
Questions for Kevin on the plan of services? Okay, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this Seeing no one, we'll go to council for a motion.
Mayor, I'm going to abstain from item B and the following, item E.
Okay, then do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item E is the consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation R1 zoning of property on tax map 51, parcel 8.11, requested by Weekly Homes LLC containing 6.04 acres. The property is located at 6304 Lee Road.
Yes, this is the annexation at 6304 Lee Road, it's about 700 feet west of the intersection with Lancaster Road. The land use plan would support medium-densey single-family residential in this area, surrounding zoning is RM in Rutherford County and three different PRDs in town, Hidden Springs, Buckingham Hills, and Olive Branch Estates. As I stated earlier, town would be providing all services except for water here. This request involves the remaining portion of the property, which was annexed as own PRD in September 2024, for phase three of the Hidden Springs development. At that time, this six acres was not requested to be annexed, with the seller of the adjoining property to build one home on it. It is still that plan to do that, but they do wish to connect to the town sewer system, and so they have requested annexation. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval, 640 against one abstention. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this annexation and R1 zoning?
Kevin, this is just basically some housekeeping from the property left over from the PRD.
Yeah, it was always their intent to build just a kind of a single house on this property, but they had determined they would, they wanted to tile into our sewer system, so they requested annexation to be able to tile into our sewer system.
Yeah, I remember last year, two years ago, when we looked at this, this piece was carved out.
Yeah, it is just that remaining piece, kind of the, the property to the north, directly north of it, was, it was all part of that property.
Other questions for Kevin?
Wait, you just, excuse me, Mayor, you just said the property north is also a part of this property?
It was part of the property originally.
Okay, originally, but not now.
It's now, it's now part of this overall development here, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Okay, this is our last public hearing, so I'll go to the public to see if anyone is here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Motion to approve, we don't get to motion to approve R1 very often, so.
That's it.
I wanted to make sure we get that one.
You want to go on record.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last item F is our housekeeping item, which is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 25-17 relative to the annexation R1 zoning of property located R1 zoning of property located on tax map 51 parcel 8.11. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Second, motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Now, under new business tonight, our planning commission, our first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the approved PRD for Dogwood Villas, formerly known as Stewart's Creek cottages requested by Land Solutions Company LLC on behalf of SC Two Properties LLC. The property requested to be amended contains 48 one hundredths of an acre and is located at 420 Mul trees, Mul trees place. Kevin?
This is a request to amend the existing PRD. It was, now has been marketed and branded Dogwood Villas. It was originally, came in through the process originally as Stewart's Creek cottages. This is, this particular piece of property is kind of in the middle there of it, but the overall development was off of Morton Lane, just north of Morton Lane. Land use plan would support medium density residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is R1, R3 and PRD, which is the Cedar Hills PRD across the street in town, and then RM and Ruthford County. The existing approved PRD would allow for 76 villas and 38 two-unit buildings, as well as one single-family house for a total of 77 units on 19.47 acres. The single-family house and detached garage existed at the time the original PRD was approved. The house is now on its own lot within the development, and that is the .48 acre in size, that lot. The requested amendment would add one single-family residence to the PRD for a total of 78 on 19.47 acres, which is an increase in the density from 3.95 per acre to four per acre. The existing lot would be divided roughly in half, which would create the equivalent of two R3 size lots of 10,000 square feet each, a little, a little over each. The existing house is supposed to remain, but the detached garage would be removed to allow for not construction of the new house. This PRD is nearing completion of development. There's no other proposed changes other than the one additional house. This PRD is required to comply with the Housing for Older Persons Act with a minimum house size of 1,450 square feet with a two-car garage. The road layout, mandatory exterior elevation requirements and all other requirements of the existing PRD would remain in effect. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval. If I can get my, here we go. This is a lot in question right here in the middle. Again, this is the existing house. This is a garage. It would basically drop a property line in the middle. This house, this garage would come down and a new house would be built. That's really what they're requesting for. But it is an increase in the density, so that's why they'd have to come back, they'd have to come back through this process.
But it kind of takes away an eyesore there, doesn't it?
Yeah, that garage is, I mean, that, that house and garage, the house is still in really pretty good shape, but the garage is, is a little, it needs some repair work or one of the others were torn down, something like that, if this doesn't happen to occur, so.
Steve or Mark, anything on this?
Yeah, I actually went out and looked at it. So that barn, or I call it a barn, it really is not like a detached garage. It's more like a pole barn with a roof on it. It sustained some damage in the storm recently, and so the rest of the neighbors kind of came to the owner and said, you know, hey, can you do something about this? It kind of looks bad. So that's the plan, is to tear that down and build a single-family home on that lot, again, matching everything. Every other lot in that subdivision is two-family lot. Every other one has two homes on each lot. So although this increases the overall density from 77 to 78, it's actually still less dense than the rest of the lots on the, on the PRD. It's a single-family home, essentially an R3 size lot. So it's probably the, if he had come back and wanted to put two there, I could, I could probably have some heartburn there, but just putting one, I think it's a good fit. And then the other house that Kevin mentioned, it's, it's technically right now rented, but it's still, it has to adhere to the 55 and over requirements of the subdivision. So even though they're renting it, it still has to rent to 55 and over, et cetera. So it's meeting all of those same PRD requirements.
Council questions on any of this?
Yeah.
Even if you split that lot up, it still looks like it's going to be larger than the other lots.
Yeah, it is. It's almost two lots compared. Those, that one half acre is equal to like four of the other cats.
Yeah, those are basically like zero lot line type homes, duplexes, you know, divided in half. Similar to like, there's several of those around town like that.
Yeah, my, my only comment is, you know, increasing the density. This is so minute, and I think it's going to be an improvement, like Steve said, by taking, taking the pole barn down and making it adhere to the rest of the PRD. I think it'll be an improvement. Just technically, that's where I have the rub, you know, increasing a previously approved PRD.
Yeah, we, you know, just last month, we had the one on Rock Springs that was very similar, and the biggest difference between this one and that one was the improvement or the change they were making increased density significantly, and on that particular one is higher density than the rest of PRD. In this case, it's actually less density than the rest of PRD, and it's literally one tenth or one hundredth of a unit difference in density. It's so small. The other thing, I don't know if you mentioned it or not, Kevin, but they, he also is extending that sidewalk across both of those lots.
Yeah, the sidewalk.
Right now, that sidewalk doesn't quite connect, but it will.
Yeah, it'd be required to have the sidewalk connect, for sure.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, then, do we have a motion?
I motion that we approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item two is consideration of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of easements by negotiation or condemnation for the purpose of carrying out the Stewart, the Stewart Creek sewer project. Kevin, are you taking that?
Yes, this is a, this is an easement acquisition project, but it would do us something that the planning commission did review through the mandatory referral requirements of state law. And so this would authorize the obtaining of the easements along Stewart Creek from I-24 to 840. There would be, in addition to that, there's a couple of mains that would be attached to that that would go along Rocky Fork Creek, as well as an unnamed stream south of the Rocky Fork Amble Road and Springwater Street intersection. There is the math, there's about three different phases proposed with this project. The planning commission did review this, did recommend, or did find it consistent with the comprehensive plan of the town, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Question for Kevin on this?
So are we stopping at Burnt Knob with the easements?
I think that's in phase one. I think we're getting easements.
Phase, phase three goes all the way to 840.
I think they're getting easements for all three phases. I believe that's correct.
And it goes all the way to 840?
Yeah.
Not right, not to it.
Just, just north of 840.
Just short.
Here's 840, this is where the easements would stop. It's just north, but it is north. Then you have the two.
There was one other significant change. Initially, when we talked about this, there was a pump station that was going to be installed at Burnt Knob. That's no longer needed because this is all gravity flow now.
This is an all-gravity system, yeah.
So that's an improvement not being forced anymore. Follow the, follow the land.
Have we, have we got the agreement worked out with the developer on the, their share of this?
That's a, that's the, are you talking about the Hillwood project?
No, he's, I think he's talking about the one at the hill.
With the Linwood?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we do have the amended agreement. And the way this will work, phase one will be to Burnt Knob.
Right.
Okay. Phase two and three could potentially be built simultaneously. Phase two is going up and taking Amberton and Morton Lane lift stations offline where everything gravities. The final phase would be from Burnt Knob to 840. We need to do phase one first, and there is 60 easements in phase one, and we're under a time constraint by the agreement. So it's going to be tied to finished design, get all the easements in place, and have this substantially complete by the timeline. So we've got, we've got to hustle.
So we do have the agreement?
We do have the amended agreement, yes.
Okay, yeah.
So, Dave, we had some people approach us about the property that runs parallel to 840 there. In regards to, they had questions about sewer from there to that property. Have we had any discussion about any of that?
It's been several years. There was another developer past Burnt Knob, but I don't remember. They were talking about, they wanted to do their own treatment, kind of mini treatment system out there, and that kind of died away. So there has been a developer that we have talked to, but not anytime recently. This has been a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, this obviously is for development that has already been approved.
Right.
By the council. And so at this point, I think staff's recommendation is that we focus on what has already been approved and what we're, you know, we've got a plan of services obviously for that and an agreement. But beyond that, I, I don't think that, I think this is the extent of what we should be looking at at this point.
I think that we need to be prepared that.
Sure.
That it, that's going to want to be developed.
I was going to ask, where's our urban growth boundary stop out there?
It's on the, it's on the south side of 840.
The other side, right?
Yeah, and it's, and then it goes on the east side. It kind of hits, kind of in this area over in here.
Is there a technical reason why we chose to stop short of 840 and not just go all the way to our urban growth boundary?
It, I don't think we talked about crossing under 840 on into the urban growth boundary because the developer that we talked to was doing everything on this side. Now, that doesn't mean it can't be extended on by the next guy.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody does development on the other side to go there.
Boring under 840.
One of the important things to remember here is there's potential SRF funding available here. It'll be important to take those lift stations offline because that moves us up the priority ranking list because then the project becomes green. So, and there'll be another lift station going in down at the church prior to the, the main truck line coming in. So we'll really be taking three lift stations offline.
Jerome brought up a point in regards to going up across 840. Is there already a sleeve there too, like there was at Jefferson?
I don't think so. I don't think there is.
Okay.
What I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. Any questions about this? Okay, no questions. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second?
Discussion?
I do have a question about the, you said there was a time, timeframe to get phase one done. What is that, what is that timeframe?
I believe within the amended agreement, we have to be substantially complete, and this is just for the Linwood portion by May of '29.
Okay.
It's, it's spring of '29. So, you know, easement, 60 easements, they could take us 12 to 18 months. So this, it's going to be pushed. It's going to be tight.
Okay.
There's one, one other question, just follow up on this. I know, sorry, Mike. What if we don't meet that timeline?
We would probably have to ask them to extend it.
Okay, there's nothing contractually that would penalize us.
It just said you, we should be substantially complete. Now, let's be honest, if, if we're doing construction and we're way on down the road and, you know, getting close, they're not going to throw the hammer down and, and say that's not going to work because they'll see, I think that was more of a, we want to make sure you're engaged and are going to do, you know, go with the gravity put in, put in the way you said. So if the easements go well, we're, we'll easily make it. If, if it's an extended period to get these easements, that's where the construction part's going to be tough. Because you're looking at 5,000 feet? 6,000 feet? No, five miles.
Right.
I apologize.
Right.
I said 5,000 feet. I'm sorry.
Right.
Five miles.
Yeah.
So you're looking at two-year construction time.
30,000 feet.
Yeah, yes.
Feels a little like Jefferson Pike's coming back to hose again, doesn't it?
So we're, our plan is to make it. Design is almost complete on the gravity, and then we will start working easements.
Other questions?
We've already gotten that set up already, if I'm not mistaken. Have we already?
For the easements?
The, is it, who is it, Bozer? Are we using them? Have we already done that part?
We use Bozer and who's the other one, Jeff? Because you have to have two.
Two, mm-hmm.
You have an, have to have an appraisal and a review appraisal for SRF, and then the negotiator is Brenda Walsh, who we always use. She does a great job.
But we, the question is really, we've already gotten those approved for you to get started once we do this. That's.
I think they're already under contract with the town, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last item under new business is consideration and adoption of the updated Town of Smyrna Major Thoroughfare and Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, also known as the Smyrna Mobility Plan. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and council, this is the update. We did kind of rebranded it as the Mobility Plan, just because Major Thoroughfare Plan, Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan is a long, long name. This was approved by the planning commission at their last meeting last week. It's an update to the plan that was adopted in 2017. This process started about a year ago. Had several opportunities for public input, meetings with smaller groups of stakeholders as well, and we had two separate joint meetings with this council and the planning commission to discuss, and you all provided good input. Our Parks and Rec Board, I didn't have them in my agenda summary, but they certainly participated in this as well, so I don't want to leave them out. Since then, staff, we've worked with Kimley Horn, the consultant hired for this project to finalize the plan, and that draft was approved by the planning commission and is attached in your packet. This plan does, it's a document that does provide the town's vision for transportation improvements. Projects have been prioritized based on existing traffic congestion, safety needs, ease of implementation and maintenance, multimodal options, public input, as well as economy and freight movements. It would help guide our decisions as the town continues to grow. It does also dictate needed right-ofways for existing and future roads that will allow the planning commission to require dedication and right-ofway improvements as development occurs. It's not meant to be a rigid document. It's provided, it's kind of called a rudder to help steer our ship as we keep moving. As a planning body for the town, the planning commission is the only body required to act on a plan under state law. However, our council has always endorsed and approved those plans as well, and so we would have put this here on your agenda and would certainly recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on our mobility plan? Had quite a few meetings on this and discussion, so it's been a long process. But a beneficial one.
We've, like I said, Mayor, we've got a list of projects that's been prioritized, and one that pops out at me is the number one project. We just approved, you know, starting to obtain easements on sewer extension out Stewart's Creek, which, once all of that development, you know, gets built, Amityville Road's going to turn into another Jefferson Pike the way it was. So my question is, and maybe this is to Dave, is how do we transition from prioritizing these projects to budgeting them, to getting them constructed?
Sure, so I'll speak specifically to the Amityville Road project, which currently we, we just seen that, I think GNRC has approved the plan at this point. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but that's in there. That project is in there. So this becomes a, this really is a planning tool for us, as, you know, we've talked about. But at that point, it's then about trying to get the funding for the project, and being a state road, we want to take advantage of as much state funding as, as we can. So being in the regional transportation plan is important. It's in their, their 10-year plan now, I think, or not 10-year plan, excuse me, their long-term plan. Is that correct, Kevin?
It was so, I don't think they've adopted the long-range plan yet.
No, it's not been adopted yet.
But we have certainly submitted it.
We're still gathering the projects.
We submitted it to the, into their project.
It's been submitted, right.
It's been submitted, and it is in the T-DOT, it is in their 10-year plan for the interchange improvements as well.
Correct, right.
That did get added to their 10-year plan, the T-DOT 10-year plan.
Yeah, so we, we've submitted the, the full length of the project. Yeah, so we, we've submitted the, the full length of the project. And the interchange is going to be a significant first step in that, at a, at a high cost for, for us. So as we, as we get that done, we can start moving into the other phases of the project and budgeting appropriately. Obviously, at a, at a, at a price tag of what we've estimated it, to get it from all the way out to eight forty is a hundred and fifty million dollars. That's, that's not something we can, we can
Buy it all, fall in one.
Right, so. So it's just a matter of prioritizing, being, recognizing it's the highest-ranked project. However, one of the, probably if, I think, the most expensive one. How do we move forward in a phased approach to ensure that it's fiscally feasible for us as we move forward?
And that's all I want to do is keep up with the growth that's going to happen up there. Stay ahead of it as far as, you know, we're doing the first step with the sewer line. And I think the roadway is going to be, you know, equally, if not more important, to make sure we get in there.
Yep.
Jerome, the other thing I think we as council members can do is continue to talk to our state reps about what this looks like, where we're gonna, where we're going to need help. And not only us, but citizens doing the same thing.
Well, do we, do we set up a meeting with them and just, you know, present this to them? Say, here's where we're at and here's some, some help we need, you know? Especially since it's a state road.
Right, and then also Kevin through TCC, me through the Transportation Policy Board, continuing to fight for that project because every, you know how this goes. Every other community is doing exactly the same.
Oh, yeah, everybody's bidding for money for their project. I just don't want us to get behind doing sewer line, all the development, and we're not keeping pace with the roadway.
The other thing I think, and Kevin and I have had this discussion, I think we're going to have to get off the fact that it's going to be an eighty-twenty split all the time now.
Right.
I don't think that that's what, I don't think that's what road projects with TDOT are moving to. I think if you're planning on that, you're going to be behind because you're not going to move up in not our list here, but the list with everybody else with TDOT. The way you move up the list with TDOT is you put money to it. That's it.
It's part of the reason we've worked so hard to get us where we are today with our fiscal responsibilities as a town. So that we can pull the other when it's necessary and have the cash sometimes to do that. So kudos to that. I know before we had TDOT come before us. And we all thought we were probably going to see some movement, you know, on that interchange recently, in the, in the last couple of years. But convenience choice lanes entered into the discussion. TDOT came and talked, talked to us, I think in February of last year, and told us that's, that's now kind of off, off the table, right? We're, we're going in this direction. So to all these people that are inputting their time to keep fighting for it, to your, to your point, Mayor, with all of our state representatives and the people that can get in the ear there at the TDOT level, I think it's paramount that we do that to keep this on track. So because that is the growth corridor. We all know that's the growth corridor out there. And to Jerome's point, I think the roads are just as important, if not as, most important thing on that agenda that way, so.
Well, and, but I think Kevin made a really good point is this is a fluid document. Because you add to that, you're looking at a new school coming out on Lee Road. That's going to have to be a priority. They're not looking at opening this coming school year, but the next school year. And if that's going to happen, we've got to make sure that getting parents to and from there is doable, so.
Sierra, you need to make sure we have the money, okay? Thank you. Yeah, and I don't want to downplay what TDOT's doing. They're, I mean, they're juggling. They're, they're like a circus act. Every community has the same issues. Yeah, so, and they've been excellent to work with. Yeah, they have.
Totally agree.
I was really surprised when we found out that their annual budget for the entire state is only five billion. I mean, that's really not a lot of money in today's dollars to do all the work. You drive through the state, you go to Knoxville, you go to Memphis, and you see all the highway state work happening. It's amazing that they can get as much done as they can for that amount of money.
Okay. Any other questions about the plan? If not, then do I have a motion?
Have a, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten under other, Dave, Amber, anything under other? I didn't have anything on my desk. Okay, then we'll move on to item eleven, status reports. Rex, this is it, your last status report?
This is it. I thought I was going to get as much time as Rixby, but I think I'm going to fall short. For the status reports, for the May state share tax, we received eight hundred and five thousand and twenty-six dollars. This puts us at two point three-nine percent above the prior year actual amount and two point nine-six percent under budget for the year. May local sales tax, we received one million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. This puts us at three point eight-eight percent above the prior year actual amount and four point one-four percent under budget.
Questions for Rex on this? Thanks, Rex.
Mayor, I was glad to see that the town selected Sierra Nolan Lowry now as the new finance director. I think she'll do an outstanding for the job, outstanding job in the future.
I think she has had a great mentor and that has prepared her for this job. And I agree, she'll do a great job. But I, I will tell you, it is going to be, as much as I'll enjoy Sierra coming up, talking to us, it's going to be kind of rough for a while not seeing you come before us and speaking. You have been a great employee, but more than that, you've been a great friend. And I appreciate everything you've done for the citizens of the town of Smyrna, but also for us as a council and specifically for me as mayor. You have exceeded all expectations.
Thank you very much.
If Rex says it can happen, it can happen.
That's right.
And if he says it can't, it can.
That's right.
I mean, he's just very transparent about our finances with us.
That's right.
Couldn't agree more with the words spoken. You're a dear friend of mine, you know that.
Thank you, likewise.
Hey.
I'd also like to mention my lovely wife for all the support that she's given me down through the years. As you said earlier, I have spent a lot of time here working. And my children, Hillary Warren and Ryan Gaither, have also been great encouragers and supporters of mine. And I'd just like to say thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rex. Okay. Directors or department heads, any announcements tonight? Mr. Moss?
Just want to update you on Cedarstone Park, Tinsel Pickleball Courts, because if you're getting questions like we are, then you probably want to know. We've called in the inspection with TDEX, since that was a grant project, they do have to come out and do a final inspection. We had to do a fifty percent inspection and a final inspection. It's right now scheduled for the twenty-third of this month, if it doesn't change. So we'll see, I know they're, they're booked up pretty good. But for the most part, the project is complete and ready to go. But we need their approval. Then we will set a ribbon cutting and grant opening date after that, unless they give us another option.
Okay, I know it's not our event. Can you talk a little bit about Saturday and what plans are?
Simply Smyrna?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's scheduled five to nine-thirty down there on Front Street. And I do know the contractor is going to clean everything up. Mike and I have had that discussion and many others to prepare for it. So there'll be, I think, five stages they're setting up, multiple areas down there, multiple acts, and be a lot of vendors. They'll have the wine tasting, things like that, Assembly Hall and in the depot. We'll be on site to support them, like we always do for electricity and that type of thing. People love it down there. It's a small area, so I know it's always a little cramped, but it's great to see everybody come back this summer. So we're hoping for good weather and hope for a good event.
With the new sidewalks, people can park across Lowry and get across easily. And then the new parking lot that we have down Front Street slash Rock Springs will be another option.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I'm assuming they've gotten permission behind the church.
Yeah, from what I understand, I think everybody in the area knows.
In the area.
But yeah, Charles tells me the sidewalks, we talked the other day, everything's operational for that, for that area.
Do you have a sign for the new parking lot? How people know that it's
Well, we're actually working on it. That's something we were looking at. But we, I don't know if they've listed on their website, but we're working on signage for each parking lot to say public parking. There's something
Several people asked about that.
Oh, have you? Okay, yeah. But, but we are working on some signage. We'll have to order a poll and stuff like that.
One, one more question back to Cedarstone. I had a couple of folks ask me about planning this past week. We approved the phase two, I guess, is it, what it's being called. Can you talk a little bit about that process and the timeline and how that's moving? That, you know, engineering and then, you know, how it's not like tomorrow, right? Just kind of explain that.
Yes, sir, we've, we've been working with Thomas and Hutton a lot here lately on that phase. Most of that design work has been done for a couple of years. But when you get into the details, we've actually added a family restroom to the concession. So that stretched the concession a little bit out. I know planning asked us to do another hydraulic determination, so we're going to have to do that for the area. So we're, we're close to being able to get that done, but that determination will have to be submitted for approval, probably by the Corps of Engineers. But plans, for the most part, are in good shape. We're going to probably, I just talked to Ryan with Thomas and Hutton yesterday about the layout of the bid document, how we want to do that. And I know they're close to getting their portion done, maybe one to two weeks on that. Architectural and MEP for the building, architectural stated they're about fifty percent. Now, he's about eighty percent, and then some of the MEP is about fifty percent done. So we're moving in that direction. Our goal is to get it bid out fairly soon, but we want to make sure we're ready to bid it.
Yeah, so we're finishing design and it'll go to bid, and then we'll get to bid, and then all of that's got to come back to council.
It'll be coming back to you guys, yeah, after we make a recommendation. So, and I would say today's times, we'll probably leave it on the street at least a month, just because it's that big of a project. I mean, you're basically building a little city when you start building a project that big. So, but we're working, I can tell you that. We want to get it out to bid, but we want to get it to where it's correct to bid, you know?
Got it, thanks.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
Other questions for Mike? Thanks.
Thank you.
Amber? Dave?
Yes, I have a few things. First, I just want to wish Rex the best in his retirement. And hate to sound like a sappy romance movie here, Rex, but I do wish we had more time together. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Y'all can hook up after you retire.
That was a little weird.
Well, also, just want to, it's been a, it's been an interesting ten days for me. On May thirty-first, we had my wife's birthday. We also had my daughter's high school graduation, graduated top ten of her class. Then on June fourth, she had her eighteenth birthday. And then on June, between that time, up until June sixth, I spent that whole week packing up the house and cleaning it up and getting out of Florida. Drove up here with my daughter, one of my daughters. And as we speak, my wife and my other two daughters are on their way here. They're about an hour out, and will finally arrive in Smyrna. We closed on our Florida house today, and we close on our Smyrna house on Thursday. So appreciate you all. Your patience with me as I work on this move, but it's been a very, very interesting but great ten days for me and looking forward to getting my family up here, so. And then the only other thing that I have for you is to let you know that we have, Rutherford County Library has free lunch for kids zero to eighteen, June fourth through July twenty-fifth, at the Public Library, or Linebaugh, is it, is that how you pronounce it, Linebaugh?
Mhm.
Linebaugh, all right. Linebaugh Public Library and Smyrna Public Library, they're offering free lunch to kids Monday through Friday at eleven a.m. And the program will be offered again from the fourth to the twenty-fifth. It will not be available on Thursday, June nineteenth, which is Juneteenth, as the libraries will be closed that day. That's all I have.
Jeff?
It's Deacon. Rex, you've been a constant friend and calm soul around here for many years, so appreciate you. I'll miss hearing him say comptroller and audit.
I hope you don't hear that often.
No, it's just Rex reminds us every year.
Gotcha, good. Thanks, Jerome?
Yes, Rex, I'm not going to get as mushy as they did. Thank you. Well done, and Sierra, congratulations for moving into the role. I have a slide for Mills on Wheels, as my daughter says, there's Gomer on the right. And Ms. Teresa on the left, and Ms. Audrey Wiles in the center, the director of the Mills on Wheels facility here. The Mills on Wheels program delivers hot meals to homebound seniors aged sixty and older who are unable to prepare food due, due to illness or disability. Volunteers provide this vital service Monday through Friday, bringing both nourishment and a friendly check, check-in each day. If this is a service you're, you or someone you know may be interested in the service, please contact them at six one five, eight nine six, five seven seven nine. And Teresa and I do it every Monday. It's really rewarding to, to kind of give back and do that. And it's a service that, that is really serving a purpose here, here in our city, our town. One other announcement, our good buddy Steve Johns, Steve Johns Appliance has won a Main Street Award. There was a lot of nominees throughout the town and winners. Steve's been in business for fifty-four years and has HG, would say, shop local. So Steve's know-all about appliances, and congratulations, Steve, for the Main Street Award.
Jerome, I really appreciate you and Teresa doing the Mills on Wheels. For so many of those, you may be the only one they see all week.
It's heartfelt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Raquel and Steve, Audrey is Donald's mama, that Donald Wilds that we went to school with, so.
But I know Audrey because I see her every when we do the charity assistance.
Yeah.
And Donna, Donna Shelton also is
Yeah, she, she does on Tuesdays.
Yeah, she's a regular participant in that as well.
Again, just like we were talking about with Ms. Bass, it's the people that step up that don't want recognition, that just want to help communities, so that's always appreciated. Jerome, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Raquel?
You were mentioning Main Street Awards. Judge Stevens also received one of those awards.
Yes.
So congratulations to her. And then again, Rex, thank you for all that you've done. I'm like, you moved on me. Thank you again for all that you've done and congratulations again for your retirement. And congratulations to you, Sierra, for the new position. We also experienced, or were part of the air show this past weekend, and it was, I think it was a great time had by all. It was great to see all the people that were in town. I know it made for traffic and congestion a little bit worse, but to be able to, just to, for the Smyrna Airport to host the air show, you know, I feel like that, that is such a blessing. And it is, it's a good event, and so many people get to come out from young to old, all ages. And many of them can sit in their backyards or in a parking lot and be able to engage in, in the air show as well. So I just wanted to mention that and say that it was a good, a good time had by all. And then I do have a slide. The Smyrna Juneteenth Committee presents the twenty twenty-five Juneteenth Celebration in Smyrna. Come out and enjoy this free event on Saturday, June the twenty-first, at Hilltop Rosenwall Park. It will be from two p.m. to eight p.m. It is a family-friendly event, and there will be food trucks, local vendors, activities for kids, and more. So if you have some time during the day, please come out to the event. This year's committee is recognizing educators, African-American educators who were born in the town of Smyrna. So every year, the event, in the event, we try to honor a different part of a profession just to recognize those individuals in the things that they've done, being a part of the town of Smyrna. So as I stated, this year, we will be recognizing educators who were born here. And then we also will be recognizing individuals who have what we are calling pillars of the community, who have reached the age of eighty who have reached the age of eighty years or older. So. And so we look forward to that, and we'd also like to, we've invited out, everybody's been invited, and we really would like to acknowledge our new town manager, chief of police, chief of fire, so that the community can get to know who you all are. So hopefully you can make that event as well. And that's all I have.
Somebody has an educator that they would like to be recognized. They just need to get in touch with you all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Educator or, right. An educator or, you said, somebody eighty or older?
Mm-hmm. That's African-American.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Jerry?
Okay. Think I have a slide? I don't think it's that one.
It is.
Okay. There it is. All right. The Friday, September the twelfth at seven-thirty is the Top Gun Run. That will be one of the highlights of the year. I know I always look forward to that. And if you haven't signed up, you can go online and do that now, and you'll have a, it's always been a great time. And so this is the sixth year, or the number six. So if you want to have a great time, enjoy a lot of, you don't have to walk, you don't have to run. You can just come out and enjoy the fun that night. So if you get a chance, please, please come out. So do I have another one or not? Okay. Rex, congratulations and thank you. We really appreciate all you've done. It's been great getting to know you and just enjoy, enjoy retirement. It's pretty fun at times. And Sierra, congratulations to you as well, and look forward to working with you. So. I also, as Jerome said, congratulations to Steve Johns. I think they call him the Speed Queen King, right? And Steve and I started in school in the first grade together, so we've known each other for a long time. And so Steve's been in business for a long time. So congratulations, Steve. And also, there's a new business that is opening in the depot district, and it's called The Cottage. And Patty and I have had several times and chances to go in to see them. And if you get a chance, go by and see them. That is a precious couple. And we are fortunate to have them try to bring their business to the downtown area, depot area. And so do get a chance, go by and say hello and get to meet them. And Gina and Jason Edwards are their names. So that's all I've got, Mayor.
Great. Thanks. Steve?
I also have a slide. I got the Smyrna Independence Day Celebration. This, Jerry said that Coosrun's one of our favorite events. This is another one of our favorite events. This one has one of those events that always seems to be a crowd favorite. It's, our celebration this year is gonna be on Thursday, July third, at the Lee Victory Recreation Park. Festivities will start at five p.m. Fireworks will start at dark. Bring your family and your lawn chairs, blankets. It'll be a night full of fun, food trucks, music, and great fireworks show. Looking forward to it. This is definitely a crowd favorite. What's the rain out date? Is it the fourth, fifth? So the rain out date in the event of rain will be the fifth. Welcome to, Dave, your family. I'm glad that you're finally getting to get back together after so many months. I'm sure it's been a little bit of a strain for all of you, so I'm glad that that's coming to an end. So make sure and tell them welcome. Rex, we've kinda beat the horse up. It's never enough, though. You've done so much for us. We wanna make sure we're recognizing you every chance we get. So thank you very much. And, you know, I joke all the time with Mayor Esther when she talks about the triple A bond rating. I remember you telling her many times that I'm not sure it's possible, but yet you still accomplished it. So very, very grateful for that. And Sierra, no doubt that you'll be, you'll fill his shoes excellent. So welcome. Dave, you also mentioned your daughter's birthday was June fourth. Mark and I, as wives, share that birthday. We mentioned it at the workshop. So now we have three June fourth birthdays. We might have to coordinate efforts to make sure nobody gets missed. My son, Kevin, will be twenty-six June seventeenth before we meet again, so happy birthday to him. And today would have been my father-in-law's ninety-seventh birthday. He passed away back in October. So keep the Shelton family, my mother-in-law, in your prayers. I know that this one is a little tougher. It's the first one he's not here for, so it's been a little tough for him. That's all.
I think I'll have a slide pop up here. Join us for the seventeenth Annual Boat Day, happening Saturday, June twenty-first, from nine to one. This is featuring free kayak and canoe rides, Dave, and for all ages. This family-friendly event educates community on the importance of water quality and boat safety. Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center staff will be on hand to provide instruction on operating the canoes and the kayaks and information about their paddle adventures program. Multiple agencies will provide fun, educational, hands-on activities for the children. It's always a fun event. Probably not as fun as those two, but it's starting to grow a lot. So.
It's number three.
Number three, yeah. You mentioned Mills on Wheels. My wife Connie does that on Wednesdays with a friend of hers named Marisa. And they, to your point, they come home feeling rewarded.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's a blessing to be able to do that. So if you're a UT fan and you like orange, drive around town, because barrels are everywhere, right? So be patient with the traffic. There's a lot of road improvement going on right now through town. Some go down to one lane. They're striping this lane or what have you. And somebody asked me at church on Sunday, man, there's a lot of work going around town, and there are. But just hang in there. Traffic is trying to improve itself by making these improvements, but be patient. You mentioned the Blues. Yes, they're gone, and boy, while they were here, we all enjoyed their company while they were here. I wanna say one thing about a longtime Smyrna citizen, Bobby, as we called her, Bobby Short. Her name was Barbara Short. But if you're from this town at all, you'll know that family. Right over there in front of the Masonic Lodge, there's a street named Doyle Short, and that was her husband. Bobby was in banking here. I remember the days of my times working for Winn-Dixie when they were here. Gosh, I'm aging myself, but this was back over forty years ago. Bobby served forty years in the banking industry, and she was with SunTrust Bank most of her career, perhaps all of her career. Ernie, Rick, I went to school with these guys. Kelly and Jason, all the children, grandchildren. Bobby lost her battle, so we wanna send our heartfelt condolences out to Bobby's family, to the people I just mentioned. I have fond memories of Bobby. Every time we'd go over with a sack full of coins or change to the bank, she was always there to smile and greet us. So condolences to the Short family, and that's all I have.
Great. So I have a couple of slides. Welcome to Redstone Federal Credit Union. They're now open on Sam Ridley Parkway. They have a beautiful building there. They have five branches in Tennessee, four of which are in Rutherford County, and we are glad one of them is in the town of Smyrna. Last week, the Smyrna Fire Department held a traditional fire housing ceremony to officially welcome our newest fire apparatus into service. It's a time-honored display of unity and respect for the fire service. Legacy firefighters joined together to push the new truck into the bay, and we were excited to be a part of that, and that new apparatus sure does look good. So. We talked a little bit about the air show. It was in town this weekend. And we aren't in charge of everything inside the gates, but we are in charge of everything outside the gates. And the amount of time and effort that our team puts in in making sure that it runs as smoothly as possible, I just can't say enough about. So first, let's see, Thursday, Friday, there was a little bit of traffic, more than what we thought. So they regrouped and changed some things up and to make things a little bit better, based on some of those orange barrels you were talking about down at Jefferson and Nolan Drive. And so we appreciate everything that our employees do to make this an exciting event and a safe event. One of the things I talked to Chief about was, did we have any issues or problems? And he said we didn't have any, anything related to the air show that was an issue. So.
One thing I would like to add, just a quick shout out to the folks that put the air show on. On Saturday, due to rain and weather, the Blues were not able to fly. And I was there. They were out on the runway, ready to start, and at the last minute, they were canceled. I just wanna say, I think the event coordinators did a great job of handling that situation and especially in honoring all of those Saturday tickets for the Sunday event. So that no one missed the Angels if they wanted to come back. And I think that says a lot. I mean, if you just think about the logistics of that a little bit, you've sold a number of tickets for each day, and now you're gonna let everybody come on one day. That's a pretty big risky move, but they did it. They pulled it off, and it allowed everybody to feel, feel like they got their money's worth and they got what they asked for. And I just, I give them kudos for the way they handled that.
Great.
That's very classy.
We'll be excited to welcome the air show back in twenty-twenty-seven. Doesn't mean we'll always get the Blue Angels. They are bid on, but who knows? It may be the Thunderbirds next time. We usually find that out the year before, in late twenty-twenty-six. So thanks for a great weekend, everybody who had part in the air show. Dave and I went out, Jeff was out there too, to the Smyrna Police and Fire Youth Academy. And it was, started this week, and so we were out there. And so I'm sure you'll have some pictures for us next time on that. And Dave, Heather and I were at the Senior Center today and talking a little bit about what we have going on in town, and they had lots of great questions. So appreciate everybody who's involved in those events. So counsel, anything else? Okay, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.